This evening, we're going to start our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Paul Munson from St. Augustine Lutheran Church. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so we're going to ask you to stay standing and face the flag. Pastor Munson?
First, I'd like to say I've got Parkinson's disease, so if you see my hands shaking, I'm not weird, that's why. Let us pray. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, in just a moment, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. And in the Pledge of Allegiance, we say, "One nation under God." Therein lies the solution to all of our nation's problems. We don't need more government and less God; we need more God and less government. For in Psalm 118, it says, "It's better to take refuge in the Lord than to take trust in princes." So we can safely say it's better to take refuge in the Lord than to trust in politicians. So whether we call ourselves Democrats, or Republicans, or Independents, may we all be a people who cry out to God in our time of need. We ask the Lord for blessing of peace upon the city of Troy. We ask that you bless our former mayor, our interim mayor, and our future mayor, whoever it will be. And as I remind my four kids when they fight and quarrel, Jesus doesn't say blessed are the quarrellers; he says blessed are the peacemakers. So may all these councilmen and women be peacemakers in the coming year. As it's Veterans' Day, I also ask, dear Lord, that you bless all our veterans; may we honor them and thank God for them. We especially pray, Lord, for those veterans who are scarred by war emotionally and physically. So bless our nation and bless our little city. In Jesus' name I ask it. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Mrs. Bittner, could you please proceed with the roll call?
Mayor McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
I would like to take a brief moment to remind the audience that anyone that wishes to address the council on either an item included on this evening's agenda, or an item not on the agenda, you must be signed into the kiosk by 7:45. Someone will be available in the lobby at this time to assist anyone that's not signed up to speak, but would like to. The first two items on our agenda this evening are special proclamations that honor two very exciting things that are happening here in Troy. The first proclamation will be presented to Pam Brady in honor of America Recycles Day 2012. The second proclamation will be given to Pastor John Munson and his son Pastor Paul Munson of the St. Augustine Lutheran Church in honor of the church's 50th anniversary here in Troy. If you could please join me at the podium for the first proclamation, Mrs. Brady. Our first proclamation of the evening, "America Recycles 2012." Whereas the world has changed a lot in the past century, from individually packaged food servings to disposable diapers, more garbage is generated now than ever before. The average American discards 7.5 pounds of garbage every day. Our garbage, our solid waste stream, all goes to landfills where it's compacted and buried. And whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles 2012, and are encouraging their employees, staff, customers, memberships, and all citizens to pledge to buy more recycled content products starting today. And whereas participating in America Recycles 2012 is one way our citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled products. And whereas the more we recycle, the less garbage winds up in our landfills and incineration plants, by reusing aluminum, paper, glass, plastics, and other metals, we can save production and energy costs and reduce by up to 75 percent the negative impacts that the extraction and processing of virgin materials has on the environment. Plastics made from precious and nonrenewable petroleum, and aluminum, which is mined from bauxite, are especially important to recycle. And whereas recycling helps protect our resources, our environment, and our quality of life, the entire loop, reduce, reuse, recycle, is completed when we buy products that are made from recycled materials. And whereas from July 2011 to June 2012, the city of Troy recycled 4,051 tons of glass, paperboard, cardboard, newspaper, metal, tin, and plastic, and 9,784 tons of compost. And whereas state and community leaders need to spread the word about the excellent programs they have established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy, City Council hereby proclaims America Recycles 2012 in Troy, Michigan, and urges all Troy residents to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Be it further resolved that America Recycles 2012 is celebrated year-round to encourage people to recycle and buy products made from recycled materials. The theme for America Recycles 2012 is, quote, "It all comes back to you," presented this 12th day of November 2012. Congratulations, Pam.
Thank you so much.
We're so happy to have you here, and I want to give you a few minutes to s-
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers, city staff, fellow residents. I am Pam Brady. Tonight, I am wearing the hat of the SACRA Advanced Master Compostor, SACRA Master Recycler, and volunteer member of SACRA's Recycling Committee. Please note that this proclamation does not have my name on it anywhere. I am accepting it on behalf of all of the residents and businesses in Troy who recycle. I invite everyone to visit the recycling website, www.sacra.org, and click on the multitude of information pieces that are available there. This week of November 12th, SACRA is giving tours of the recycling facility. Just call 248-288-5150 to register. It is free. Such a tour shows just what 300,000 people who put their minds together can do for the good of the environment. I continue to be amazed and proud of my fellow residents. In honor of America Recycles Day in Troy, the SACRA Recycling Center, as well as Troy City Hall, is selling recycling bins for half-price, $6, for the entire month of November. Stop by City Hall to the Community Affairs Office, Cindy Stewart, anytime between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. to get one or two, limit two per household. If you are like me, with the ever-greater amount of items that SACRA recycles, and a little judicious buying on my part, I am using two bins weekly, and the volume of my garbage is cut by more than half. That is especially good, since we pay $27.50 for every ton to dispose of garbage, but we receive $50 back to the city for every ton we recycle. We're allowed to put out as many recycle bins as we like each week. We're increasing our recycling numbers, but I'll bet we can do even better if we try. If you need help from the city, call Emily Frontera, Troy's Recycling Coordinator, at 248-524-3399. Not that I have her number memorized, but I call her very often. Let me reiterate. Every item going into the garbage costs the city money. Every item that goes into the recycle bin gives money back to the city. Economically, it is this simple: trash costs us; recycling pays us. If you notice, I'm using the back of the sheets of the paper.[786.44][786.44](Laughter) But environmentally, it is way more important. We should conserve as many natural resources as possible for ourselves and our future generations. Recycling improves land, water, and air quality; there is no downside. I'm casually dressed tonight to suggest that using yard waste on-site, that is to say, on your own lawn and gardens, is a form of recycling also. Grass clips are 85 percent water, and they're high in nitrogen, so you don't have to water as often, nor fertilize as much, when you leave the clips on the lawn after you mow. And mowing the leaves into the grass in the fall puts back into the soil those ingredients and trace elements the tree used to make those leaves so pretty in the fall, so that they can grow again next year. This saves the natural and human resources of tax dollars, having to pick up the grass and leaves at the curb, trucking them to the transfer station, transporting them to the compost facility, lending them so that they can decompose, and then sifting the product and bringing it back to the city, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You get the idea. But it is very labor-intensive. So let's not waste a single good thing; let's reduce, reuse, recycle, everything we can, inside and outside the house. It's not only an alternative we can all live with; it's a present that we can give to our future. Thank you.[886.63][886.63](Applause)
The second proclamation tonight is going to be, oh, no problem. One less microphone, that's okay. Celebrating 50 years, St. Augustine Lutheran Church. And if I could ask Pastor John Munson and Pastor Paul Munson to come up, so that I can present the proclamation to you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. Scoot around so everyone can see you. Whereas Pastor John Munson started St. Augustine Lutheran Church on farmland in Troy to meet the religious needs of the community in the early 1960s, and whereas back then, far fewer residents lived in the city of Troy than do so today, but Pastor John worked hard, he knocked on doors, and gathered together a small flock to start the new church. And whereas the first services for St. Augustine Lutheran Church took place in the old Troy High School, by 1963, they had built a place of their own in which to worship, and that sanctuary has been in continuous use since that time. And whereas in the 1970s, Troy started to go through a population explosion, this small country town turned into a big suburban city. As Troy grew, so did St. Augustine Lutheran Church, and a small building addition was constructed in 1979. And whereas the much larger addition was built in 1994, that added classrooms and a fellowship hall, countless children, youth, and adults have learned about the Lord inside these rooms. And whereas in 2005, Pastor John Munson passed the baton off to his son Pastor Paul Munson. And whereas over the years, Troy has gone from a small country town to a big suburban city, to a multicultural metropolis, over 80 different languages are spoken in Troy today. As St. Augustine Lutheran Church celebrates its 50th anniversary, the church faces a new challenge, to reach those who come from so many different nations with the love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate St. Augustine Lutheran Church on its 50th anniversary, and recognizes its impact upon not only your membership, but also on the entire community. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of St. Augustine Lutheran Church's 50th anniversary, as they enter into their future with dedication to both their faith and expanding their ministry in our community and beyond. This is presented to you on this 12th day of November 2012.
My son says I should talk.
I talk enough on Sunday.
Anyway, yes, I came in 1961. I was married in Chicago, in Beverly Hills, and from there, we went through the Upper Peninsula and came down to Troy, and started through the Michigan District of our Senate. And as he said, I walked from house to house at that time, not as many houses as there are today.[1100.63][1100.63](Laughter) A lot more distance to walk to amaze houses. But we held our first two years, we met in our Parsonage basement, and my wife used to listen through the heating system to hear what was going on in our meetings down there. But anyway, God has blessed us, and I'm very happy. And in a way, my most difficult son became the pastor.[1126.58][1126.58](Laughter) So if you're having problems with your children, remember, never give up hope.[1131.83][1131.83](Laughter)
Hopefully, none of my classmates from Athens are here tonight, saying, "Oh, what I was like."[1143.33][1143.33](Laughter) Thank you so much.
Thank you to both Mrs. Brady and Pastor Munson for their continued commitment to their causes and to the city of Troy. Getting back to the agenda, there are no carryover items this evening, and we also have no public hearings scheduled. So this is going to bring us to our first public comment session of the evening. This is going to be strictly for commentary on any item that's found on tonight's agenda. You'll note that there's going to be a lengthy description and explanation of the council rules regarding public comment that are included in our agenda. So at this point, I'm going to just point out a few key items that I think will help keep everyone on track that signed up to participate. And I will note that anyone that would like a complete look at the rules, you can find them in Article 17 of our Rules of Procedure for City Council. Anyone that signed up to speak is going to get three minutes to address the council. There is a timer that's located directly up here that you can use to gauge your time. You'll find a yellow light will be flashing when you have one minute remaining, and we hope that all comments will conclude when a speaker's time is up. During this portion of public comment, you may address any issues relative to one or many items that you're going to find on the agenda tonight that we may be discussing or voting on. We are asking the speakers, per our rules of decorum, to refrain from making any derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. Failure to follow these rules could result in immediate consequences. I would like to say that on behalf of the council, we welcome this opportunity for citizen input in a professional and a productive manner. We also would like you to keep in mind that councilmembers and city staff are more than willing to work with you to resolve all of these issues outside of the meeting as well. So we hope that you would be likely to contact us, any of us up here, or city staff, to help you address issues in between council meetings. That being said, I only see two people that are signed up to speak in this section, so I'm going to ask the first person to approach the podium, Jim Wurpatinsky, if he's here right now. Wonderful. And if you could introduce yourself and let us know what items you're going to be speaking to us on, so we can follow along in our agenda. Okay, and if you want to just, perfect.
I noticed we're going to be looking into the, oh, excuse me, good evening, council, mayor, city staff. I know we're going to be looking into doing something with the parks, again. And the current plan had a dog park in it, I believe. It never did happen. I don't know if the second plan, the new plan, is going to have it. I would implore you to put one in. I think we really need it. My dog is 15 and a half years old, so he won't be able to get any benefit out of it, but there's lots of other dogs around that would. Royal Oak has four dog parks, I believe. And, you know, we like to brag in Troy about all the amenities we have here, and which we have many, but I think it's a crying shame we don't have one dog park for our furry friends. Maybe you're not aware of how many dogs are really in the city. I suspect a lot of them aren't licensed, because when I was walking door-to-door for the election, it seemed like every third or fourth house I went to, I was greeted by barking dogs. So I really would like you to, I know we're not going to spend any money in the next five years or whatever, for parks, period, but I'd like this to be moved up to number one priority, so when things do get better, and they will, that, you know, we take care of our furry friends, because they mean a lot to some of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the second person that we have signed up to speak is Adam Barrent, and I apologize if I am not pronouncing your last name correctly. If you could approach the podium, please.
Good evening, Adam Barrent. I'm speaking tonight on a closed public, a closed agenda item today. You'll be discussing in closed session regarding Lamar Advertising Company. I am a resident of Troy. I've been here for 15 years. I'm a partner in the law firm of Bodman, PLC. Troy and Lamar have been in a lawsuit now for approximately 18 months. Lawsuits spanned two courts, the Michigan Court of Appeals, as well as federal court. I have been working with Alan Motzney, one of the staff attorneys here in the city of Troy, and I asked Alan for the opportunity to speak with you about a settlement proposal that Lamar has made. And I wanted to, tonight, just to mention a couple points, which I think might extend the olive branch. I know we're all here tonight about the idea of moving on and trying to find resolutions. Lamar is seeking to erect two billboards in the city of Troy, on Naughton Street and on Austin Street. The lawsuit that is pending, or that has been pending in various courts, relates to the fact that Lamar believes that the city of Troy's ordinance prohibits billboards. Putting all those issues of advocacy aside, what Lamar ultimately wants to do is have a message that is heard in Troy, that can promote local business. Billboard advertising is predominantly nationwide, over 80 percent for local advertising, which is a key statistic for a community like Troy, in which I do business, and others, where you're trying to get your message heard. The two proposals that Lamar has made, which you'll discuss in closed session. Number one, Lamar has entered into quite a few agreements recently with municipalities throughout Michigan, in which a local property owned by the municipality hosts the billboard, and in return, the municipality itself had received substantial funding from Lamar on an annual basis. Tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, have been generated by local communities on an annual basis. That's a firefighter or firefighters, that's a police department, that's a library budget. Believe that the property here, adjacent to I-75, makes it unique to allow that Lamar to put a billboard in that location. I'd be happy to speak with the city attorney about the details of that, but I think it's a financial opportunity. Number two, alternatively, to extend the olive branch, Lamar is willing to tear down the billboard on Stevenson Highway, which has been an eyesore to the city of Troy for many years, for the right to erect the two billboards it proposes. All it's asking is for a modification of the height from 25 feet to 45 feet, because that's for I-75 and banks, as well as changing the size perimeter from 300 feet to 360 feet. Those two modifications would resolve the lawsuits with Lamar, and I believe under that kind of construct, we could move forward. Unless there's any questions, I may, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a response reply section to public comment. I don't know if any of my colleagues have anything that they would like to respond or reply to.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Slater?
I know later on, we're going to talk about O-5, but perhaps Mr. Miller could just address the issue regarding the dogs briefly, for the resident that came up tonight.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. There is an item reporting on the update to our Parks and Recreation Plan, and what I would say to any resident is that there are four different ways to comment on the plan, and that's the whole purpose of this, is to find out what the community wants. And those will include public hearings, both here at City Council and at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, but we also have some tools. We have a survey, we also, which will start later this month, we also have Michigan Community Input, which you can go on the Planning Department's website and look into it, on how to utilize this tool. In the end, what this is about is to get the input from the community on what you want at the parks, and then we will prioritize them. And just to comment, I know people who have dogs and go to dog parks, they love them. And we do have quite a few people in the community that would like that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Is there anything else? Will we move on? Okay. We have no postponed items on the agenda tonight, so we're going to be moving right into regular business. Item I-1A, this addresses the annual appointment process for mayor pro tem. Included in your materials, councilmembers and members of the public, is the actual language that is found in our Rules of Procedure, that specifically outlines the selection process for mayor pro tem. As we are all aware, this is a one-year term that rotates annually, and based on our current Rules of Procedure, Councilwoman Slater is designated right now to rotate into this position for the coming year. Resolution I-1B is also included, on the premise that a new mayor pro tem is also going to mean that that person is going to be assuming the role of acting mayor. So I anticipate that we're going to be further discussing all of the mayoral succession plans in a study session scheduled for later this evening. If there are no objections, I would ask that someone on council moves Resolution A and/or and B.
Mayor? I'm sorry, unfortunately, Ms. Bittner was doing election stuff on Friday, so as far as B, that is actually the appointment of the mayor for the term expiring November of 2013. And that is one mayor that, it would be my recommendation that you not vote on that, especially since you do have a study session afterwards. The first one, actually, that will be, the mayor pro tem will serve as the acting mayor. So there will be two oaths of office given to the person once you have a resolution that decides who that will be.
I apologize. So I should have been more clear on the date, but this would be for a councilperson to serve as mayor pro tem and also acting mayor?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilman Slater?
I'll move that resolution forward to appoint Mr. Slater, Councilman Slater, to the mayor pro tem, as written.
Do you have a second?
Vote.
Moved by Councilman Campbell, supported by Councilman Teetz. Is there any other discussion that we need to have on this issue? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Councilman Slater. If you could join our city clerk at the podium so that she can administer the oaths. And I believe after that, we're going to take a short recess so that we can attend to some housekeeping matters up here at the council table.
I do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the offices of Mayor Pro Temp and Acting Mayor in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability. So, I will.
I don't think it's fair that I should follow such a beautiful person, but that's the way it goes when you get old. A very important thing to do in my first duty, and that is to call a recess so that we can do some administrative things up here at this podium, so we will recess for 10 minutes and be back at 8:10. Okay, the meeting is reconvened. Our next order of business is I-1B and I-1C, and I'm going to ask for a postponement on this resolution. If I could get somebody to move for a postponement?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to postpone item I-1B, because we're going to be covering that in the study session.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we postpone I-1B. The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next order of business is I-1C, excuse me, which is the adoption of the Rules of Procedure. I think it would be best if we also postpone that item until we have seven members to fully discuss that, and I wonder if somebody can move that resolution. Councilman McGinnis?
I move that we postpone the adoption or amendment of our Rules of Procedure.
Is there a second? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman?
Campbell.
Campbell?
That's special.
I thought you were down there.
I'm over.
Is there a discussion?
Mayor?
Just to be clear for everyone, we'll keep the Rules of Procedure exactly as were voted
on last year, so there's no change until we get a full complement of council people.
Okay. Correct. I know the city attorney would like to change some parts of that, but we all thought it was best that if we would just wait until we had a seventh member, that would be the best, so. Any further discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. We got to get used to that. Next order of business is I-2, boards and committee appointments. There is the mayoral appointment for the downtown development authority that was moved by the previous mayor, and I'm going to move to postpone this item. I don't want everybody to think that we're just postponing everything, but I didn't have anything to do with moving that at this time. I would like at least a week or so to speak with each of the candidates to make sure that it's still their intent, so I'm going to move to postpone this for two weeks. And if I hit support?
I'll support it.
Moved by Mayor Slater and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we postpone this item for two weeks. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor, just to clarify, the people that are currently serving on this downtown development authority, then, if there's no change, I think the rules are, they just continue to serve as is, there's no need to notify them or whatever, they will just continue to serve. Correct?
Mayor, that is a correct statement, and most of the persons who are on here are currently serving, so in all aspects, there's just one person who is not currently serving.
Yeah, I want to make it clear, I don't have any issues with any of the proposed people, but I would just, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to contact them before this meeting, so I just like would have an opportunity to talk to them before I'm the actual one that would nominate them. So I don't have any problems, I just want to talk to them personally. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passed. There are no city council appointments, so we're going to move to I-3, boards and committees. There are none at this point, no mayoral nominations or city council nominations. Next is I-4, a request for closed session. If I could get a motion for that.
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
We have resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E. Pending litigation, Lamar Advertising versus City of Troy.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis that we, do we have some discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next order of business is I-5, the approval of an amendment to MDOT capital contract for the Troy multimodal transit facility, MDOT contract number 2011-0231/A1. Is someone that wants to move the resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis? Or?
If you, actually, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, I was going to ask if I could read it into the record, so.
I think it should be read. Thank you.
Whereas on September 12th, 2011, city council approved capital contract number 2011-0231 with MDOT, resolution number 2011-09-210, for $8,485,212,000 in federal funds for the final design and construction of the Troy multimodal transit facility. And whereas on January 17th, 2012, city council resolved that the total cost of the Troy multimodal transit center shall not exceed $6,272,500, resolution number 2012-01-008. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves amendment A1 to MDOT, capital contract number 2011-0231, between the City of Troy and the Michigan Department of Transportation, that reduces the funding amount from the original $8,485,212,000 to the not-to-exceed amount of $6,272,500 previously approved by city council, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. Just to make a point here, that this $6,272,500, we're guaranteed because we've hired a construction manager at risk, that's Tools &amp; Clark LLC, that monitors this project and guarantees it does not go over. If you read the back after this, it said the city is liable if we go over that, MDOT, and they're saying we'd be liable for anything over, but actually, we're not, because we have a level of protection, and I think our city attorney can verify that, we have a level of protection in the event it were to go over, and we do not anticipate it, that's their job to make sure it doesn't, but if it were to go over that amount, the city would not be liable. Tools &amp; Clark, our construction manager at risk, would be liable for this, that's our insurance.
Mayor, Councilman Fleming is correct in that, and if you have any questions concerning that, I'm happy to address them.
Correct. Councilwoman McGinnis?
And just to clarify as well, that there is a need for this money to be released so that the funding that we are not going to be using can then hopefully be dedicated to another transportation project, and so that's the need to do that today.
Mayor, that's also correct.
Correct. And we voted last session for that protection when we passed the resolution two weeks ago, so I think we're all very confident that this project is secure at $6,200,000. Any further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item of business is I-6, the contract amendment for testing services for the Troy multimodal transit facility. Somebody wants to move that resolution? Well...
Councilman Teetz, he's just begging to read over there.
I enjoy it. I move...
Councilman Teetz?
Thank you. I move our resolution, contract amendment for testing services for the Troy multimodal transit facility. Would you like me to read the whole thing? No, thank you.
You know, I think at this point, when it relates to the transit center, it might be good to read into the record so that everybody out there...
Must be good being mayor. All right. Whereas on January 17th, 2012, city council approved a contract with Hubble Roth and Clark, Inc., for architectural and engineering services for the multimodal transit facility. Whereas the AE contract has awarded included a placeholder amount for construction testing services that would need to be adjusted based on the final design of the transit center and scope of testing work needed for its construction. And whereas HRC has submitted the testing proposal based on the transit center's final design that keeps the project within the $6,272,500 project cost limit previously set by the council, therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council hereby approves amendment number one to the architectural and engineering contract between City of Troy, Hubble Roth and Clark, for testing services in support of the Troy multimodal transit facility in the amount of $64,841.28.
Support. Moved by Councilman Teetz and seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I think it would be helpful for our acting city manager to give us just a synopsis of what that all means for...
Well, I'll start talking, Mayor, members of council, but hopefully Mr. Van Detten, city engineer, and Wally Alex from HRC will be walking in here to describe this further. But this is to subcontract out from HRC and Newman Smith, the architectural component, to do testing such as steel and for expertise in which the main team doesn't have, and so I can get further clarification from the guys that work on this day to day.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council, acting mayor. This is the last contract that we are going to be bringing before you, this is for testing services. The guaranteed maximum price, as was mentioned, was brought at the last meeting, and we are soon to be having our groundbreaking on this project, so it's exciting that this project is going forward. The testing services that are involved, I'll let Wally briefly describe those, which I guess I'll let you do right now.
Hi, I'm Wally Alex, Hubble Roth &amp; Clark. We have numerous things that need to be watched while the construction's going on, and those weren't identified in the beginning, we only put in a placeholder of $8,000 for a field representative out during construction. We now have the project bid, and we know the extent of the testing that's required. A bulk of that is going to be done by a subconsultant to us, SME, who is going to be watching the welds that are put together in the fabrication plant for the bridge structure that's being constructed. When that gets delivered to the site, they also ensure that the erection is done properly, so part of this contract is for specialized type of services. The rest of the contract is more normal type of density testing for utilities that go in, concrete testing for the foundations that go in, we take cylinders to make sure that the concrete is achieved its required strength, the asphalt that goes in, we test that, and there's various numerous things that are tested as part of this contract.
Just want to point out that also the amount of this contract is within the overall project budget so that it does not exceed the 6.272,500 project limit.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next is I-7, 2013 city council meeting dates. Some may think that this is premature, but we like to get this out to the residents as soon as possible, so if somebody could move the resolution, we can always change this at a further, different meeting.
I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passed. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there anybody on council that wants to pull a consent agenda item? Hearing none, is somebody willing to move the resolution for all consent agenda items?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Next item of business is memorandums and future council agenda items, none submitted under the K items. That moves us to public comment for items not on the agenda. And I'm not going to read the rules again, but if everybody would just please pay attention to the rules that are outlined in the agenda, and there are approximately 15 residents that have signed up to speak, if you could just watch the monitor, and when the yellow light goes on, that gives you one minute remaining of your three minutes, and try to wrap it up as best you can. The first resident to speak is Barbara Klein. Please come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I learned it takes a village to raise a child, and very often it takes a village to support a village. The intelligence that inhabits Troy have proved to be, so far for the 39 years I've lived here, to be extraordinary. Most importantly, it takes a wise council to run a village. Thank you for the work you do. For me, your vision statement adopted in 2011 is working. Troy is becoming quite a great place to be. It is a city for tomorrow, today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is resident Andrew Dabish. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
Okay. Basically, I want to introduce myself to you, my name is Andrew Dabish, I have put in an application to be mayor of the City of Troy. Some of my accreditations are, I've worked with the Troy Police Department and Somerset Collection and Target Security in order to be part of our family business, which at the time was a gas station in Flint in order to be a lookout for criminals, that was one of them. The other one is keeping customers first, and I believe that the citizens of the City of Troy are basically quite like customers, so you must treat them with the golden rule. The golden rule is treat others as you want to be treated, and that's what I've do for my entire career, if you will, working and serving people. I've also received an award from Governor Granholm back in 2005 for its service to the community. Since 2005, I have been serving people with disabilities in the state of Michigan, those people include two of my brothers, who we have been residents for, my brothers have been residents in Troy for five years, and I have been a resident of Troy for three years, and I basically wanted to introduce myself to the council and to you, sir. And I want to give you, although I did drop off a resume, I was going to make 10 copies, but after this lady here mentioned that, you know, we have to reduce and reuse, I decided to give you my copy and to give you my business card. Thank you very much for your time.
You did receive your...
You did receive it?
We did.
Did you get my business card as well?
I think we just got your resume.
Give that to the clerk.
Give that to the clerk.
To the clerk, okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next resident signed up to speak is Ed Neet. Mr. Neet?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Ed Neet, resident for 25 years. About two weeks before the election, I was going out in the morning, and I happened to notice, not that it really matters anymore, but there was a recall sign in the back part of a man's lot, and so that evening, I was on my way home, and he was out in the yard working there with his son on their car, and so I thought, what the heck, I'm going to stop, I talked to him a little bit there, and I asked him if that was his property over there, and he said yes, and I said, did you know what that sign was for? And he says, well, no, I really don't know. And so I said, well, that's to recall our mayor. And he says, oh, who is he? I'm going to repeat that, who is he? Now, it doesn't matter what side you're on of the issues, and whether the election, the recall, and all that stuff, but just an observation, I don't know how many people that refers to in the City of Troy. So I guess my comment is, is more people, whatever your issue is, and whoever's side you're on, and whatever the issues are, it might make, you know, to pay more attention what's going on in your city. I don't understand how you could go through this past year and not know who the mayor was, and if she was a he or she. Whether the vote was, again, I don't know if everybody in this city voted this time, but here it was 52 to 48, somewhere around 1,700 or plus whatever votes that the mayor lost the recall for, but that leads me into the next section, which is, would be the state house seat that Martin Horlick won by 426 votes. Now, I'm not sure, I think he is our next state house, but if only 50% or whatever it was that voted in the election, I guess that's debatable, but what we've gone over in the past year. But the thing I really wanted to get to, this came in the mail, and I'm not even going to show it, but it came about five days, that was Thursday, I think, I came home, and I opened the mail up, and it was in there, and basically, it's a hit piece on Martin Horlick. Now, in my 25 years in Troy, I've never seen such a character assassination. The second, there's two pages on him, and the third page is on him also, and in my opinion, it verges on race baiting, really. And it's put out ironically by a group, Michigan Citizens for a Better Tomorrow, 5:30, West Donia Street, Sweet Sea, Lansing, Michigan, 48933. Well, when you come to center of this piece, on the first page, it starts talking about Martin's wife, and so my wife is Filipino, and boy, she got upset. So we made some calls to our friends, we talked to some of our neighbors, they're Taiwanese, Chinese, Hindu, Indian, and they saw it also in their mailbox, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So unfortunate that things like that have to happen. Next resident to speak is Avis Landmesser? Was it him, Smith? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
My name is Avis Landmesser, I have lived in Old Big Beaver, now the City of Troy, for 59 years, my husband for 75. We've seen many mayors and council members come and go since incorporation of our city in 1955, and have witnessed a number of very heated political disagreements over the years. Although recall of an elected official is provided for in the Michigan Constitution, our city thankfully has not had a history of settling political differences by using that provision. We always debated the issues and resolved them before or at the next scheduled election. But because of the success of last Tuesday's recall initiative, we now do have such a history. The city's acceptance of federal funding for a transit center was a very polarizing and contentious political issue, and we won't know for some time how successful that transit center will be. But of greater significance than the transit center's fate, at least for me, was the so-called grassroots recall fever that in effect disenfranchised the votes of hundreds of Troy citizens who participated in the 2011 mayoral election. I would not want participation in invalidating my neighbor's vote on my conscience. Those people responsible for the recall effort said that Mayor Daniels was an embarrassment to Troy on the national stage, and that her divisive comments and views were just too extreme. Have they forgotten that our bill of rights ensures freedom of... Have they forgotten that our Bill of Rights ensures freedom of thought and speech to everyone and that everyone includes Mayor Daniels, even if you strongly disagree with her political and social philosophies? It does not grant anyone the right to deny another's freedom of speech by way of referendum. But for now, the dark forces of the thought police amongst us have succeeded in accomplishing just that. But beware, they may themselves someday become victims of the very same misguided mindset. I hope you read Mayor Daniels' post-election interview in last Thursday's Oakland Press. She said the people had spoken, she accepted the verdict of the recall, and that she had been honored to serve as the mayor of Troy. Her words were quite a stark contrast to the barrage of hateful and malicious words directed at her in this chamber by supposedly well-educated, intolerant people. Few of us could have endured such vicious attacks. I thank Mayor Daniels for her service and wish her well.
Thank you, Ms. Bittner.
And it is my sincere hope that our new mayor will experience a rewarding term in office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I skipped Resident William Schmidt. We're going to have to work on the font, I think. Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening. My name is William Schmidt. I've been a Troy resident for 26 years. And I just want to tell the council that in light of the last election, it's time for a return to civility in Troy and it's a time to keep national politics and national ideology out of the city of Troy. Your job as council is to do what's best for the citizens of Troy and let those who are concerned about national ideologies handle that in Congress and not in the chambers of the city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please. The rules are explained in the agenda. Please abide by the rules. Our next resident to speak is Kathy Fuchinari.
I'm Kathy Fuchinari. I'm a 36-year resident of Troy. I'm here tonight to demonstrate that I support this council's move to, move forward in peace. I look to efforts, I look to efforts to work in the best interest of the whole community, regardless of ideological, philosophical, cultural, or other differences. My hopes are that our new council will be fiscally responsible, will protect the assets that collectively define the city, and will treat all members of this community with courtesy and respect, and recognize the hard work and the stellar ethics of our city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Cynthia Wilshere.
Good evening and congratulations to the citizens of Troy for doing the right thing and getting us back on track. Tonight, when I came in, I looked around and I mentioned it to other people, I have never seen so many smiling faces. When I came in here today, everyone seemed to be happy, which hasn't happened in a long time. Now, I have a question for you. Is the council going to interview candidates for the open position like you did for the city manager? And will the public be invited into those sessions? When the council selects persons for the open position or positions, please listen and reflect back on what our community has been saying to you. We want the most qualified person that has been in the community doing positive service work, no extremes, right or left, someone who can be in the middle of the road and compromise if necessary. We've been hearing a lot about compromise lately. Their brains should be connected to their mouth. And smart enough to know that what they say can cause legal ramifications. People in Troy are afraid of a possible appointments being made because some in the past were very contentious. I would like to suggest that the next candidate with the most votes in the last council election be put at the top of the list. At least the citizens know something about that person, they vote, if they voted, and could be considered the people's choice, not the council's choice. Thank you, and I wish you all good luck and Godspeed in your decision.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Lynn Hoderek.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Lynn Hoderek and I have been a Troy resident for 21 years. First, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all of you, the members of council. Your willingness to move forward and work together is so appreciated by the citizens of Troy. In a time of uncertainty like this, good leadership is crucial. I would also like to express my support for one particular individual to fill the mayor's seat. This person has consistently demonstrated tact and poise at the council table and has the council and community experience that is so important in the main representative of a city. That person is Maureen McGinnis. Councilwoman McGinnis has proven effective at leading from a middle ground perspective, making logical and clear-headed decisions, and representing our city in positive ways. She is the clear choice to serve as mayor until next November. Again, thank you for all your work as city leaders and best of luck in your decision-making. Thanks.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Barbara Yagley.
Good evening, Mayor Slater and council. I'm also a resident of Troy. We have just completed a bruising recall of Mayor Janice Daniels, a process that one recall leader said resulted in a lot of feelings being hurt on both sides. So the question becomes, what have we learned and how can we prevent something like this from happening again? I will offer two suggestions for the consideration of council and the residents of Troy. First, every resident of Troy ought to be more ready to give a favorable interpretation to another statement than to condemn it. Common courtesy dictates that we give people the benefit of the doubt and avoid jumping to conclusions when we read or hear awful things about the other, especially things that have the potential of being taken out of context. If there seems to be no reasonable interpretation of the statement, fairness requires us in good faith to seek clarification from the originator. If the originator did intend malice, then correct him or her with respect. If that does not suffice, then try all suitable ways to bring the originator to an understanding of the harmfulness of his or her statement, including the remedy of a recall. Had we followed these principles, we could have had peace in our community and avoided the divisiveness. The failure to follow these principles during the one-year tenure of Janice Daniels has done much, much harm to our community. Now that I've become more aware of what has been going on around here, I don't feel I can trust anything coming out of certain organizations within this city. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Sound too Christian? I'm not trying to impose my Christian morality on y'all, just making a proposal.
Please speak to the council.
I'm sorry. The second suggestion, the major complaints about Mayor Daniels were that no one knew enough about her even though she was a regular participant at city council meetings and that she was elected by a tiny minority who allegedly did not represent the values of our community. I don't know what was the reasoning behind having city council and mayor elections during the odd years, but I think I would encourage you to reconsider that and try, and amend the charter to shift the election to the even-numbered years to coincide with the national elections so that will ensure maximum citizen participation. On behalf of myself and my family, I have no issue at all with the council. I think you guys have done the best you could under the circumstances and have been very professional. I wish I could say the same about the community.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Richard Peters.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, bro, him, council, folks in Troy. First, I want to say that, you know, for those people who supported Ms. Daniels, we feel that the pain and anguish for her, I don't personally, I was neutral on it, so I didn't one way or the other, but hopefully we can do better by you in the city. And for the people at one, you know, let's move on and hopefully we can have a gracious, you know, put it forward ahead and put our, roll up our sleeves and let's get to work and, you know, do our thing. I want to talk about gun violence. Today, we just seen somebody walked into a police thing and they shot a police officer. And we've seen this far too often in the press. Now, someone here earlier was talking about national politics not following in Detroit. Well, to me, that's like living in a straw house. You know, we've just seen a rash of, I seen in the paper where they're stealing tires and things of this nature. You know, it simply doesn't wash. And there's certain things that we should be doing. And I think one of these is that we should consider, you know, reexamining what the court did on the Second Amendment with this opening it up for background checks. Too often, we've seen where somebody's shooting on a freeway or spouse being shot or a high school or campus or something like that. And I would hope that we reexamine that issue. And other than that, maybe we could support a BTU tax for, but I would hope that we concentrate on the climate, you know, for our future, the next few years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Rhonda Hendrickson.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Prior to about three years ago, I had not been involved in municipal matters. As long as my streets were plowed and we could check out books at the library, I went about my daily life. But I witnessed up close a divisive, cynical, and uncivil situation that's been my hometown and I am ready for change. And I think the winds of change are with you. It's possible right now to throw up the sails and chose to go in another direction. It's possible to do that if the council and the citizens recognize and acknowledge that we are all in the same boat, together. If we're going to make headway, then as a community of 81,000, we must be determined to work together, disavow partisan politics, and take Troy full steam ahead. Taking on the responsibility of steering this community is not done lightly. I have great respect for all of your willingness to sit down and do this job. What is important to remember is that the core of the job is about what the people in the neighborhoods care about day to day. It's about our schools and our roads, police and libraries. It's about our businesses and our homes. It's about building a community that our children will want to return to and raise their children. It's about moving the community forward with respect for our collective history. Your job is not to affect change beyond our borders. You are here to make Troy the best it can possibly be now and in the future. In order to steer the ship successfully, you must be willing to respect and rely on your colleagues and understand that you may not always have a perfect path, but are willing to get to the best destination together while restoring the heart and soul of this community, as you know, which has been deeply damaged. Please set an example for cooperation to our youth to navigate difficult situations with goodwill. Make sure that the person that will join you at this table is somebody that, whose only ideology is the ideology of a better Troy for all citizens in all walks of life. There are many fine citizens who do not have a political axe to grind or an agenda to push. Cast your net wide to find the best person for the job, someone who brings spirit of teamwork and wants to make our city go forward. There's been too much ugliness in this chamber and it's time for fresh air. I ask you to please restore our community's faith and reputation, be good stewards and guide our city forward without discrimination or exception. It's the time to take a deep breath and get the wind at our back. We have much to be proud of. We're diverse, dynamic, and dedicated, and we have a lot to accomplish. Troy residents are counting on you to set the course and the tone to take us far, and I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess Mr. Dale Marish is ready to speak.
Yeah, didn't want to waste your time. Good evening. I'm here to nominate Wade Fleming for mayor and Ed Kempin to replace him on city council. I'm using first names and places to not waste everyone's time and follow FDR's advice, be brief, be sincere, and be seated. I'll save my extra words for blog posts for critics to throw rocks at. My first choice would have been Doug Teetz or Dave Henderson, as in the email I sent to the council. However, Dave sent an email back explaining that he and Doug would have to cut their terms short by three years and run a campaign next November. Troy's had enough extra campaigns and doesn't need to cut short the terms of good people. So that leaves Wade Fleming to preserve the current power balance, a conservative mayor and city spokesman with conservative council majority. Mayor Daniels served us well, bringing a new focus on things that make for healthy communities. Past mayors have not been as engaged in doing that, but she drew nothing but criticism since the day she took office a year ago with 100% negative opposition and mostly hostile coverage by the media. The vicious comments by her opponents on the patch after they won her re-